Gotta open this in. Here we go, thank you. We're gonna call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and we'll begin with roll call. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett is here. Mr. Deloach.
Here.
Mr. Loper.
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer. Mr. Kiefer's not here, so is he coming? Have you heard anything?
Heard. I thought he was.
Okay.
Yes, I talked to him yesterday. I mean, he was coming.
I'm not starting early, am I? It's five oh one. We'll go ahead and begin with the invocation and the pledge, and then maybe he'll be here by the time we do that. And I'm gonna turn it to our clerk to introduce a special guest for us tonight that's gonna give us the invocation, and if he would lead us in our pledge at the end of that, it'd be great.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Please help me welcome Mr. Torian White, who was born and raised in Effingham County. He began his collegiate studies as at the University of Georgia, and then went on to earn three graduate degrees, culminating with a PhD in curriculum and instruction from Mercer University. During his twenty-year career in education, he has served as a high school mathematics teacher, graduation coach, and assistant principal. In addition, he has served as a middle school principal in Rockdale and Bullock Counties for a total of seven years, and he is currently serving in his fourth year as principal at his alma mater, South Effingham High School. Through avenues inside and outside of the church, Dr. White is focused on helping youth understand the connection between their daily choices and the path to their desired future. Everyone, please help me welcome Dr. Torian White.
Before he shares our invocation, he's probably better known as the young man, and now I guess the older man. I knew him as a young man when he was my son's best friend and changed Nathan from a B student to an A student. And even today, I thank Torian for his influence, his morality, his ethics, his Christian faith, and certainly his academic achievements challenged my son. So I'm sure you're doing that same thing at the school, and we appreciate what you do, not only for old kids, but the new kids. Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
This all rise.
Thank you.
May we pray. Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day that you've blessed us with. We thank you for the breath in our bodies and the ability to live out the purpose you've called us to. For this meeting tonight, we ask that you be our honored guests, that you offer inspiration, that you offer everything that we need in this place. Guide the decisions that are made, and let it all be for your glory as we continue to live in this great community. We thank you and give you praise for all things. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Mercer. Thank you, Dr. White. It's hard for me to get used to addressing you so formally, but we appreciate you again. We have before us our agenda tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
No, sir. No changes.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Loper to approve the agenda as presented, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Here now, we have our agenda. We have the minutes before us for the nine eleven twenty-two retreat and the September sixth work session and regular minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to any of these minutes? Motion to approve these minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach, to approve these minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And our minutes are officially accepted. Once again, welcome our public tonight and all our constituents who are here tonight for this meeting. The agenda items are in our clerk's office. The information for it's on our website. Hope you had a chance to review that, and you're ready to speak at the appropriate time. If you'd like to speak to any item, we want to definitely hear from you tonight. It's important what you have to say. If you can limit it to two or three minutes, that's wonderful, so more can have time. If not a lot of people speak, we can extend that. We'll make sure everybody has a good chance to share and speak to any agenda item tonight. And with that, we have a special introduction tonight. I'll turn it over to our clerk again for that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, tonight we have Mr. Blake Carter with us, the 4-H Director. He is wanting to present his new staff members and introduce them to you all.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, nice to see y'all. Since the last time I was here, we've had a lot of changes at our office. We went from just me and Ms. Karen as a secretary to almost a full staff. So with me tonight, I have our new 4-H agent, Ms. Morgan Triplet, who is taking over from Abby Smith's position at the 4-H office. Ms. Shannon Gray, who's our program assistant, who started with us on Monday. And we have the 4-H educator, Anthony Catanzaridi, as well. So we're only one position away from being fully staffed, so I just wanna make sure y'all knew that and were aware. Two other things, real quick. Thank y'all for the truck. I remember Allison gave me the call, and she said, hey, I got your new county work truck up here at the office. And I was, we were ecstatic. And you've made a lot of other counties jealous, so I just wanted you to know that. Scraven County has been jealous. Burke County made some comments, so thank y'all for that. We really appreciate all the support. And the last thing is, we're planning a Boo in the Park or Halloween event for the end of October in Springfield, and it's gonna be October twenty-eighth, the Friday, the last Friday in October. So we want to invite y'all out. If y'all have y'all's kids, grandkids, anything like that, y'all come on out, and we'll do trick-or-treat in a movie in the park.
Last Saturday in October?
Last Friday night in October.
That's Friday night.
And it'll start at six thirty or six o'clock? Six thirty. So thank y'all. Appreciate y'all.
Welcome. Good to have you guys on staff. So you're the new Abby?
I'm the new Abby. I'm the big shoes to fill.
Yeah, big shoes. I'm sure you can do it. We'll expect great things with all this beefed-up staff now. It'll be wonderful. That sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we have a presentation at five fifteen. It's not quite five fifteen, but are our folks here for the presentation? Metropolitan Planning Organization? Are they here?
She's here.
Okay. So we have a presentation by the Coastal Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, on the development of the two thousand fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. If they'd like to come forward, and there she is, hiding back there.
Thank you, board members, for allowing me to do the presentation. I actually went to the wrong place, because I used to attend the Effingham TAB meeting, so it's on the six oh one.
You went to the old administration.
Yes, I went all the way over there. The lady over there just told me, no, 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 it's the Renaissance Bank. So thank you for allowing me to do the presentation. Before I do my presentation, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Waikota Wong. I'm the Director of Transportation Administration at the Chatham County Savannah Metropolitan Planning Commission. We staff the Coastal Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, which does the transportation planning for the three county area. Currently, our boundary probably doesn't include much of Effingham County, but we're expecting to include more. And actually, I recognize a Tim over there and Teresa, so they have been our TCC members and a core MPO board members for at least five years. So I just wanted to do an introduction. So the metropolitan, what is the Metropolitan Planning Organization? It is for any urbanized area with a population of more than fifty thousand, that you gotta have established a Metropolitan Planning Organization. The Savannah MPO, we actually reached more than two hundred thousand people in two thousand two, so we were designated a TMA, Transportation Management Area, which is bigger MPO, so we have more responsibilities. The MPO, the establishment of the MPO is to prioritize the local and the regional transportation resources, basically federal and state, federal transportation dollars, and then allocate those to the prioritized projects. Because previously, in nineteen sixty, DOT makes the decisions for all of us. So that's why you see a lot of historic buildings were torn down. So you will see a lot of problems. So that's why we're required to do the MPO. We have a three-C comprehensive continuing cooperative planning process. That means our transportation plan has to be continuously updated every five years, since I'm going to talk about this, every five years, that's continuing and cooperative. Our MPO board is made up of all the modal representatives and the local appointed elected officials. And the comprehensive, that means that we have to consider land use, environment, housing, everything related to transportation. So the most important document of the MPO is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, called MTP. Our next one would be covered twenty twenty-five to twenty fifty. It's called Moving Forward Together, twenty fifty, and that's the most important. So basically, if you have the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, you might have one hundred projects, one hundred. And then it's moving into implementations through the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the four-year. So the MTP covers about twenty-five years, and MTP is, the TIP is four years. So that's the highest priority. It's a subset of MTP projects. And as the TMA, we also need to evaluate congestion and devise strategies to address relief congestion. And also, we have to address the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And then all of this process will include public involvement. The MPO's planning emphasis areas, because of the new federal funding legislation, we are required to address all of these, like tackling climate crisis. So probably we'll see our roadways, the cost probably will be increased because of the flooding. So you might want to incorporate some like strategies to relieve flooding. And equity, so we have to make sure low-income minority populations and people with limited English proficiency have to be involved in our planning processes, so that's equity. And complete streets, that means that we have to consider not only the drivers, but also transit users and bicycle and pedestrian cyclists. And public involvement, I have already mentioned that. And we have to coordinate with the federal planning agencies and sharing data with all the agencies. So these are our current planning boundary. As you can see, Effingham County, you only have like two tiny fingers, because after two thousand ten census release, we actually coordinated with Effingham County. And the yellow portion is actually Savannah urbanized area. The MPO boundary is supposed to be the urbanized area plus areas to be urbanized within the next twenty years. So during that time, Effingham County decided not to expand the boundary. But I'm thinking of the twenty twenty census, you will see more Effingham County to be included in the core MPO. You will see a lot of values, because I can just tell you a story. You know the Old River Road improvements, because it goes through Effingham County and Chatham County? There used to be a project, joint collaboration between Chatham County and Effingham County. We actually programmed that project in our long-range transportation plan, and then the Transportation Improvement Program for implementation. And suddenly, it was withdrawn. The reason was, Chatham County is part of the core MPO boundary, so we are able to allocate the federal Z two thirty funds on that project. But Effingham County, that portion of like Old River Road is not included in our boundary, so we cannot allocate the federal dollars. So Effingham County has to come up with the one hundred percent of your portion. So Effingham County couldn't come up with that money. So that's why that project was dropped. But if you expanded, the boundary is expanded, and we can provide the local, we can provide the federal funds, and you only need to provide twenty percent local match. So there's a possibility for you to get more funds. And also, you want to do some kind of a study, so we can also use the federal dollars. And then if you also have, if you have like bicycle and pedestrian project or trail projects, even if it's in a local roads, the federal dollars can still spend on them, because they are bicycle and pedestrian projects. But the point is that you have to be located in a core MPO boundary. So currently, we have call for projects, but Effingham County probably cannot apply, because you're not in the MPO boundary yet. But we also got coordination from Effingham County, so we know what your transportation needs are, because we are doing the freight plan updates, so we know where the freight development and warehouses. So we will have recommendations, and so eventually, we will be able to spend federal dollars. So I have talked about core MPO board. It's the locally elected appointed officials, including Effingham County. And...
Go back to the previous slide.
Okay. This one?
And that's the, those are not all board members. That's all board members.
These are the core MPO board. Yeah, these are core MPO board members. So you have...
One person from Effingham would be on board?
Yeah, we got one.
Yes.
We have one. That's one reason they're talking about expanding it, too. We're hoping we would get two or three in our area possibly.
Correct. I mean, if it goes into Rincon, then that would, we could potentially get a seat there. It really, I mean, it's based on population, right?
Yeah, based on population, yes.
I mean, interesting thing is, Bryan County, they're not on the board, but Richmond Hill is, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Just because of the urbanized area is a hundred percent in Richmond Hill, that's why.
If the, if the MPO, back to the previous slide, if the MPO expands its territory, is there more federal dollars that will come into the MPO?
Well, actually, the federal dollars come to the Savannah urbanized area. I think the census got rid of the urbanized area definition, but it's urban area. So it would be probably, they expanded the yellow portion. So federal dollars actually are allocated by the population within the yellow portion. But even if you're not in the yellow portion, like for example, you see the Taipe Island over here. So they actually, they are not in the yellow portion, but they still get federal dollars, because they're within the MPO boundary.
So unless Effingham pulled in Rincon, we probably would not get additional federal dollars into the MPO, because that's the urbanized area? Is that what we're saying?
Well, let me ask this, too, because this, so I was under the impression that the MPO boundary, the core MPO boundary, was identical to the urbanized area, but it's not?
It is the urbanized area plus areas to be urbanized within the next twenty years.
Okay. And that's determined by the census?
The urban area is determined by the census.
So how do you determine the area that's going to be urbanized within the next twenty?
We can probably use the census. They have like definitions by households, by population per square mile.
Okay.
So just based on that, you would do some kind of projection, like within the next twenty years, what is the projection?
The core area does not give you the funding. It's the urban area that gives you the funding.
Yeah, the urban area give you the funding.
But the, you know, Old River Road is not in the urbanized area.
Yeah.
But that got funding.
Well, no. The Old River Road is here, so this portion is not in the MPO boundary, but that portion in Chatham County is.
Well, but that's, and I'm sorry if I'm asking the question here, but the question I have is, so the federal funding follows the yellow?
No, federal funding follows the red boundary.
Okay.
The yellow just determines the amount or what is funded, you know?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess my reason I was asking that question is that if the yellow, which is all pretty much Chatham, generates the federal funding, and they control the board, how much are they gonna want to take some of the funding that's in their urban area and put it in the core area? You know, is that what I'm saying?
Well, that's my question. So whatever project you say funds it twenty percent from the county, does that go into the MPO, or is that just for what's happening in Effingham County?
Local match is twenty percent.
Does our money stay in Effingham County, or do we fund everything in yellow?
Okay, just let me just give you the example of the Old River Road. Old River Road is divided between Chatham County and Effingham County. So supposedly, one million dollars is needed from Effingham County, and one million dollars is needed from Chatham County. So we will provide eight hundred thousand dollars to Chatham County, and they need to come up with two hundred thousand dollars.
For their section.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But for...
And you'd give us eight hundred thousand, had we been in the MPO?
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand, we'd supply two hundred of the million dollars.
Yeah, but now, you have to spend one million dollars instead of two hundred thousand dollars.
So his question is basically, we're not funding Chatham County when we're funding...
You're funding yourself, yes. Yes.
That's the big...
It's gonna entitle you.
Four money in there if we got...
Exactly.
And I think the spirit is to not look at it as counties. The spirit of this is to look at it as a region.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
I know. I know what you're, I know. I'm just saying, that's the intent.
Our taxpayers' money, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm probably jumping into your presentation here, that we need to look for additional representation. Because, once again, if I was in Savannah or Chatham, and I had all the urban, my area was generating all the federal funds, I'd have a hard time giving it up for an area that might be an urban area in the next twenty years. So we need a good voice on the board, more than just, by now, I'm the chairman, so I'm on it, but I've given that vote to Tim to attend.
I'm a good voice.
Huh? What's that?
I'm a good voice.
Yeah, he's a good voice, and he knows more what's happening with transportation, so I got him taking my place on that.
I've never been able to get, and I don't want to get ahead of your presentation, because I'm probably, I'll tell you what, why don't we finish the presentation? Because you may address some of the questions.
I just wondered about the federal funding. Was it gonna increase? If you increase the boundaries in it, it won't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I'm just, yeah, currently, Effingham County has one board member on the MPO board. But you also, you are also Technical Coordinating Committee member, because Teresa represents the Technical Coordinating Committee on the core MPO, because we have four advisory committees. TCC is one of those, and Teresa is on it. And then Economic Development and the Freight Advisory Committee, actually, Effingham County has two seats as well, the county manager, and then also the Effingham Industrial, is that Industrial Authority?
Authority.
Yeah, IDA, yeah, yes. So I think Brian is on that one.
Chairman, or is that the director?
That's, that's Brent.
Chairman or designee, probably.
Yeah, that's Brent.
Yeah, he's on that as well. And the Citizens Advisory Committee, currently, we don't have any member. So if you would like to appoint somebody, and we will welcome that. And Advisory Committee on Accessible Transportation that addresses people with disabilities.
So we could get a citizen appointment as far as the advisory committee?
Yes, Citizens Advisory Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee members appointed by the core MPO board members. So since you have one board member, so you can appoint one CEC member.
I thought we had Brett Bennett.
You had one, but...
Is Brett on there?
He resigned, okay.
She resigned, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check on that.
So even if currently, Effingham County is only like two tiny fingers included on the MPO board, but you are represented on all these committees. Just want to make sure. The core MPO is actually, currently, we only have like three and a half members, staff members. So the, our exact director of the MPC is part of the MPO, and I'm the director, and I have two planners and one administrative assistant. So like I said, our most important product of the MPO is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and it's regional, and it's multimodal. It addresses highway transit, freight, congestion, bicycle, pedestrian trails. So as you can see, our next one is called Moving Forward Together, twenty fifty. So I do have this, and I just want to let you know, this is our first round of public meetings, so we've just to give you an introduction about what it is. And next summer, we're going to probably have some recommendations from these plans and studies. And then the last round, we will give you like finalized project list, because the Metropolitan Transportation Plan has to be financially constrained. That means we cannot spend more than what we have. So if you only have, I think for the last one, we have about one point five billion dollars, so you can only spend less than one point five billion dollars. You cannot spend one point six billion dollars. So I will present that probably in two years to you, and about what kind of projects. The good thing is, you already have one project that's ongoing, that is Effingham Parkway. Actually, Effingham Parkway was programmed in our long-range transportation plan before, believe it or not. It's the Chatham portion, and also it moves into the Transportation Improvement Program. So your project has already been going through the MPO process before. We are targeting to adopt our plan next, the plan in summer twenty twenty-four, and like I said, it will be multimodal and include all of these recommendations. So we are still very early in the process. We are evaluating the data right now, and we're developing the goals, objectives, and we have a survey through the link, and we would like to welcome everybody to take the survey. And I would just leave this to Teresa, so that she can distribute. So there's like QR code you can scan that would take you to our website, so you can take the survey. So if you have surveys, you can take the survey, and if you have specific locations that you want to address, like I ninety-five at Stairway twenty-one. The reason I was here, it took me about one hour and a half to drive over here, because between Stairway thirty-seven and that foot line over there, not foot line, I think the Publix over there, I got stuck for about forty minutes. So that would be a location that I want to report. So if you go to the website, there's like a map survey, so you can click on it and report the problem. If you see congestion, report congestion. If you see sidewalk not connecting, report it, so that we know. Because we're also updating our non-motorized transportation plan, and I think Tim has been talking about you doing the SS four A grant application. So if, actually, if your, if your project is already included in the non-motorized transportation plan, you might have more chances of getting awards. So I just want to mention that.
Is that the grant? Is that the grant that you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So even the future grant, see, City Savannah is applying for the SS four A grant for implementation of bicycle and pedestrian improvements projects. And Chatham County is applying for SS four A grant for developing a safety plan. So if their project is consistent with the MPO's plan, you actually, you can get more chances. So, so if, if their project is consistent with the MPO's plan, you actually, you can get more chances.
And, and we submitted that last week, correct?
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, September fifteenth was the deadline. Um, like I said, we will have three, um, public involvement, uh, opportunities, and, uh, we are at the beginning of the stage. So, so we're collecting survey, uh, developing, uh, refine our goals and, and objectives. Um, that includes safety, security, performance reliability, accessibility, stewardship system, environmental preservation. So we, we will refine this based on the survey results, uh, we already got about two hundred, two hundred fifty-four, uh, survey results coming back as of this morning. And also, it will, uh, let us know what kind of priorities we want to, want to give, for example, if we have one point five billion dollars for the whole plan. And probably the bike or-
Five billion?
One point five billion probably, yeah.
Billion?
Yeah, yeah, that's for twenty-five years.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so even if the, the bike pad, um, mode share might be only one percent, but if more people want that, we might allocate more funds towards that kind of improvements. So, um, actually today, this is the, our, yeah, one of the meetings that, that during the first round, so. And like I said, just take the survey, and actually, you have a lot of, we also have like, like a freight survey over there. So if you are a freight stakeholder, if you want to report the freight problems, and you can just take the freight survey. And freight also have a map survey, because you have a lot of warehouses over your development, really to, to the port. So you can also take that survey, um, but right now, we're focused on the twenty fifty survey and map survey. So, um, for more information, you can just shoot me an email, or just text message me, so I'll be glad to, um, provide you a response. Or you can just go through Tim or Teresa, so, so that, so that they, they, they will get you the response through us.
Do we have an idea when the new urbanized area, have an update on that, when that's coming out?
December.
December?
Yeah, according to the census schedule, the urban area will be released in December of this year.
Okay, thank you.
And then after that, we will determine what our boundary will be, and the, we would develop the MOU, and then the bylaws. That, that's where, if you want to add one board member, yes, that's, that's your opportunity.
I saw that little yellow area, is that where our Parkway is located?
No, it's, um, uh, it's-
What's in, what's in the MPO?
In the, in the yellow area is like Ro, Roebling Road, um, like ar- around there, um, right across the border. Uh, and then there's one neighborhood, and I'm, additional neighborhood, um, I, uh, I, I forget what it is.
That's along the seventeen corridor then?
Uh, yeah, on the, um, uh, what corridor is that, um, it's not eighty, I think it's on seventeen.
I think Roebling Road runs in seventeen, yeah. And did I understand you say the, uh, MPO, because I always ask that question about the fu, the federal funding, it's one point five billion that we have over twenty-five years?
Yes.
That's the funding that the MPO controls?
That's, that, that's for, for the current twenty forty-five plan. So, so we would do, uh, revenue projections, uh, probably next summer, to, to determine how much money we will have.
What, what's the annual funds, uh, federal funds that the MPO controls?
Uh, it, well, basically, all the federal dollars, uh, that we invest, uh, in the Savannah region, for example, I sixteen whitening, that you, you see that, that is going on, and I sixteen at I ninety-five interchange reconstruction, all of those have to be included in the MPO's long range plan, and then TIP, before the federal dollars can be allocated to them. Um, but each year is different, like those two projects, they combined, uh, more than two hundred million dollars?
Federal funds?
Yeah, federal fa, yeah, federal, federal and state funds.
Okay.
So, so those two, I think probably, if, if I remember correctly, it's about two hundred eighty million dollars, those two projects alone. So those two, if, if, if you split them into different, uh, four years, so, so you will see like seventy million dollars. But there will be other projects, so it depends on, on which, on, on which year. So, so if you have like those heavy hitters, so one year might be programmed very heavily. So, uh, it, it, and it sort of depends on the project development schedule.
Okay.
So, um, I just want to, uh, mention this, as you can see, this, this blue area, the Rinkin, so last time, it is actually pretty close, pretty close. So I'm just thinking maybe this time it will connect. And census have all those definition areas, so they can do like jumps or hoops, so, so they ha, they, they have definitions, so, so we will, we will derive the urban area during that time.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to do the presentation.
Good presentation, thank you so much for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on through our agenda, we're at, uh, our consent agenda. Four, three items on the consent agenda, I'll read them with an entertaining motion for approving all three items with one motion. Item number one, consideration to approve ratification for soil and groundwater sampling at the former Atlas Sand Mine property for, uh, Tremco Environmental Solutions LLC. And then item number two, and the consent agenda is ratification of approval of a proposal by Laracy Technology Solutions to develop a techno, technology strategic plan. And item number three, consideration to approve the twenty twenty-three ACCG Group Self-Insurance Workers Compensation Fund Contract.
Can we discuss the Laracy Technology thing?
We have to remove it from the consent agenda, we can do that.
Not really, I'd like to.
All right.
I'd like to learn more about that before we spend-
Do we need a motion to remove that consent agenda? All right, I have a motion to remove item two of the consent agenda and put it under new business. Motion?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes, and we'll move that to item one A, if that's okay, if we do it first, okay. Make a note. All right, we have two items on the consent agenda that I've read, items one and three, I have a motion to approve the congen-
Make a motion to approve the revised consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the revised consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, revised consent agenda of one, items one and three are approved unanimously. All right, we'll go to new business, and the one A, we've added ratification of approval of a proposal by Laracy Technology Solutions to develop a technology strategic plan, okay?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, um, so, uh, what we've asked here, uh, is, uh, we wanted to have, uh, I've been wanting to do this for, uh, for a little while, uh, to have a more global look at our technology infrastructure wi, uh, within the county. Uh, and that's everything from our connectivity to our, um, uh, our, uh, server infrastructure, our network infrastructure, uh, to our software and application systems, to our security, uh, and also our, our end-user hardware, uh, just to make sure, um, uh, that we have a, uh, that we're going in a direction, uh, that, uh, that serves the citizens the best. Uh, one of the things we, um, uh, and, and, uh, uh, Mr. Laracy, uh, as some of you may know, had just retired, uh, as the director of IT, uh, of the school district, uh, and started doing this on a, um, uh, consulting basis. Uh, so I thought this was an opportunity for us to get someone who knows Effingham County, uh, and, um, has done something similar, although a little bit more robust, uh, than what we have, uh, in the school district. Uh, just to take a look at, we have come up with a, a sit-down with everybody individually, that's part of the plan, sit down with department heads, uh, and, uh, solicit feedback, uh, and then actually just do analysis of what we have to kind of, uh, give us a strategic plan to move forward.
For, for me, I'm not ready for this part of it, because we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars for taxpayers' money, and then we're gonna implement solutions that are gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I don't see, you didn't identify a problem we're having right now. So I have a hard time spending that money just to see if we have a problem. We've got a breakdown in communication somewhere, if we're behind in technology somewhere, we don't know that, from what I'm gathering. And, you know, I've seen these things come out, they can be half a million dollar solutions that we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars to figure out if we need them or not. I'd rather put that money somewhere else, to be honest with you, that's just my thoughts, unless we have a bona fide, hey, we got some communication problems that need some, some work, then I could see spending that money, but twenty grand is to see if we've got an issue, I have a hard time getting over that.
Can you help us with, uh, understanding why you want to move forward with the, the global look at this?
Um, well, you know, one, one thing, I, it's on diff, in several different, um, uh, areas that are important. Um, and certainly on the security side of things, uh, it's important, and I think it's always important, particularly on an IT side, uh, to have someone look from the outside in, um, because, uh, most often, you don't know you're vulnerable, uh, until it's too late. Um, uh, and, uh, there, and I don't look at, uh, IT as a, uh, necessarily as a, as a cost center. I look at it as a cost savings, uh, uh, opportunity, um, because, uh, as we implement better IT solutions, um, we're allowed to, uh, it gives us the ability to, um, uh, spend money on, on capital, on, on a capital improvement investment uh, that could potentially save us, uh, on, uh, a payroll investment. Um, it's just basically using technology to get, uh, to find efficiencies. Uh, and that's difficult to do, certainly on Chris's part, um, when you're spending the day, um, trying to keep the boat afloat. Um, you know, to try and, uh, uh, look from the outside in, uh, and determine what, uh, what our vulnerabilities are, what our opportunities are, and what our missed opportunities are, so that's, um, kind of where we are, um, uh, on, on our IT, uh, uh, analysis here. Uh, I look at it more as, just like we're doing, uh, master plans, uh, for our facilities, uh, master plans for, um, IT, uh, is, um, uh, it's just as critical. Um, and so, um, you know, that's the basis, uh, that, that I used for, uh, for recommending this.
I can agree with Tim on that, you know, I think a good, a second set of eyes from the outside, especially the school board being much larger with people constantly, it's always people trying to hack into what little bit I have.
If this was focused on that-
Personal data, all our employees' personal data, um, I can understand.
If we were focused on security, I'd be all for it, but this is a comprehensive plan, it's not focused on security, this is blanket.
But it encompasses security.
It will, but if, I mean, I can't say spend that much money, if we're just look, if we're looking for security, we hire people that handle just security. You know, this is what I'm, from what I read on this, this is-
It's that much money for the entire, for our whole system?
Well, I know, but twenty thousand dollars, that's just to look at it.
Well, I'm the worst person to talk to about technology, but I, I would agree with, uh, Commissioner Floyd. I, I was just kind of looking at this, this was gonna be like a master plan.
Right.
You know, looking to see what we're doing, uh, that's kind of what I was thinking.
I'd be all for it, if it was later, we, we just built this building, we just put communications in here, we just spent a lot of money doing these types of things, I just think it's a little premature for this, if we wanted to focus on security, I'd be all for that. But it's gonna be hard to convince me to go with full-fledged proposal that we're gonna spend twenty grand, and so we can spend a half a million or more.
But what's the difference, what's the difference in our water and sewer master plan and our, our road infrastructure master plan, I mean, we-
Because we know a need, we have a need.
You don't think we have any needs in IT?
Nobody knows.
Well, that's what this is supposed to fit, find out.
So I'm not an expert, you're not an expert, I mean-
If it ain't broke.
Let, let me qualify a little bit on our water and sewer. Um, I don't know that we knew, we, we knew we're gonna have growth, we knew we're gonna have growth in our technology. But the questions we had, what is, are, with our size lines, do we have the pressure? What do we need to do if we want additional pressure, if we hadn't grown, we would not need to have the water modeling we did.
Right.
Because we wouldn't need the extra pressure.
We knew we were growing, we knew we had an issue.
Right, so that's kind of my thought here, even in technology, with different departments and staff, how it communicates, having the security over that, are we communicating the best way we can communicate, I, I don't know, I, once again, I'm with you.
Yeah, I'm not a technology guy.
I'm not the one, what I, what I see this as, and, and I don't know, uh, Mr. Laracy's expertise in this area, I, I hope the staff has researched that and saw the credentials and believes he can do this, but I see this as someone that, this would be the first phase, if you find four or five things like, that could be issues, then you might have a bigger contract, all right, what's the best resolve economically and so forth? Because we, we had, for instance, if I'm coming from on water and sewer, we had our engineer in front to do some modeling to start with, and then we saw some issues. And then we hired, uh, engineers to go out and say, all right, this is the issue that our mo, our modeling identified, can you say how we could resolve this and what the cost would be? Because I was looking at maybe storage tanks to resolve it, um, some different-
Yeah, we, we, again, we had an issue, I mean, I-
But, but I'm saying, I'm saying it grew.
I mean, you guys can vote on it, but I don't think it's for me.
I'll tell you another example, how about these radios that all our EMS people, we have to upgrade those every five years, you know what we spend just to be able to communicate through radios? Because technology's always changing, it's a lot more than twenty thousand dollars.
Is it, we do, but it's also revolved around emergencies as well.
Well, what I, what I'd like, just as an example, what I see coming out of it, and this is just a, a micro example, um, that, uh, that I'm used to, is the bu, like the building department. I, I believe there's efficiencies in the building department to utilize technology more, but then how does, how does, you know, that module work with public works? You know, I, I don't know how it all works, and hopefully that's some of the things that'll come out of it.
Is that some of the things we might be looking at?
And, and so that, that's one of the big things, is, you know, we're, we're on a software package, and quite frankly, we don't know, uh, that runs our permitting, our water, uh, billing, our finance, and our HR, uh, and, um, and, uh, and we've had it for a while, and it was really designed around a smaller county or a smaller city. Uh, but it works us, but it works, but it's working for us. Uh, and so do we go out and invest in a more robust system, uh, which could cost substantially more money? Or is there a way, uh, to activate the features in this system, uh, and, uh, and provide the same result? Um, you know, Chris, you know, tries to keep up with, uh, uh, the system's called ADG. Um, but, you know, we simply do not have the resources to go out there and analyze, you know, every software package out there and kind of do the, uh, do the math to determine whether it's worth it. I know, uh, on a, on a customer side, that's one of the complaints that we get, um, is, you know, everything has to be taken care of with either a visit to the office or a phone call, you know, versus being able to simply log in to see where their application or where their plans review is, uh, where it currently stands. And so those are the kind of, um, those are the kind of systems we want to, we want to be able to look at. Um, uh, you know, we, uh, for, and, you know, do we get one encompassing, all encompassing system? Or we just start to break it off, where we have, uh, an HR system, um, that's different than the permitting system, uh, that's different than the, uh, water and sewer billing system? Um, you know, a lot of those takes an enormous amount of analysis, uh, that is very difficult for us to do, uh, while we're, and then, and then we end up relying on vendors um, to provide us with all the, uh, information, rather than having a third party look at, I mean, that's, that's kind of one example.
And you, you get the answer, you won't.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot more clear than what is on this thing.
Right, I mean, it's, it's a big, it's a, it's a, it's a big plan, but I think-
That's what I was looking for, let's, here's some reasoning behind it, here's some connectivity behind it, here's some efficiencies we can identify. Security thing I totally get, I mean, I've had customers in my business that, that lose everything because of security breaches, but they'll hire certain people to, to focus just on that, you know, usually a specialist in those areas, but everything else is pretty, pretty, you know, standard, some, one person could accomplish everything else, security thing, I don't, I don't know, that'd be-
Absolutely.
You know, somebody else, but I, okay, that, that makes sense, I appreciate that.
Do you feel like this is a tool that you and Chris need to be more efficient and help us save some cost down the road?
We, we have had a master plan in the past that we have operated off of, that the board approved, um, I think two thousand and five. Um, it has not been updated since then, we've just about completed everything that was on that master plan. Um, the items that we did not complete, uh, were decided to be put off, um, due to cost, um, by the board, so-
Probably the recession.
So we're, we're pretty much at a point where it's time to get another outside look at it, um, just to get a second set of eyes on it, uh, we've had network audits done in the past, security audits, um, we get audited by the GBI and the FBI on a regular basis, so, but to get another set of, of eyes on it, to look at the software packages and, and the other areas that, that we utilize would definitely help.
Thank you, and I just keep seeing, okay, we updated tax-
Thank you. And I just keep seeing, okay, we updated Texas's office, we updated sheriff's office. We updated, you know, keep seeing a lot of money being spent in this area, so just.
You're talking about software wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and, and that, and I think we're doing these on a, on an individual basis.
Right.
And, and I worry that we're not doing, doing these in a way that, you know, we bought, we invested in this and it doesn't work with this. And, you know, it kind of gives us a little bit more of a global look.
I can go along with it. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we're entertaining motion for one A. This would be to ratify or approval of a proposal by Laris C. Technology Solutions to develop a technology strategic plan for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. I remember one, we'll call it one B, that was one. Consideration to approve a quote from Georgia Fire Rescue Supply for the purchase of hydraulic rescue tools.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Sorry, I go to council meetings as well. This equipment is for the three new fire engines that'll be delivered around the December to January timeframe. And this is the Jaws of Life that you hear of. While that's technically another company's actual name, that's what it is. And we do have an additional, like a loose equipment bid that's out right now, so that will come to y'all in the future, which is for the rest of the equipment. But as this was a sole source vendor, we had to split it up.
We don't have a Jaws of Life now?
We do.
We do.
But all of the career stations have a set deployed throughout the county.
I got you. Any questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve all number one, second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two, a new business, consideration to approve various job descriptions for the Development Services Department.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Sarah Mousoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Tonight, we're here for approval of the addition of five new SROs, which are school resource officers. We are requesting the following change.
Your, your step moving ahead.
Number two.
Back, go back one.
Go back one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had them out of order. Sorry. Okay. Approval of publication of job descriptions for positions authorized in the two thousand twenty-two budget for Development Services and IT. So, these have been approved already, but currently, it's, we're not asking for new people. We're just asking to change the job titles and the duties. We've kind of reorganized a couple positions. Applications Administrator is for IT. We've got a Planner, Process Manager, Zoning Manager, Zoning Technician, and the Planning Manager for Development Services.
We understand that there's not a, a new posi, well, redefined positions, but no new hires for these positions.
Correct.
What are the discussions or questions do we have regarding these positions? Or do we have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Now we have the Resource Officers. Item number three, consideration to approve the addition of five School Resource Officers to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget of the Sheriff's Office.
Sure. So this was brought to us, Chairman, a few weeks back. You had mentioned you had a meeting with the Superintendent of Education and I believe the Sheriff. So in conjunction with all three entities, just, I guess, after all the recent events throughout the country regarding school safety, they have requested five additional School Resource Officers. So that way, every single school, elementary, middle, and high school, has their own individual School Resource Officers. Currently, middle school and high school, we're sharing one deputy who's trying to do traffic in the morning, traffic in the afternoon, problems throughout the day. It's just kind of, they can't cover everything, right? And they, they're not servicing the children. So, we have asked, the Sheriff has asked, we've got it posted, for you guys to approve the budget to do five more. And if it is approved, then we would take it to Mark, who would do a budget amendment to allow that. And there is a caution. So the Board of Education provides seventy-five percent of the salary and benefits, and we do the other twenty-five percent.
And I'll just, one clarification on that is that in, in order to increase the pool of applicants for this, one of the options the Sheriff is interested in looking at is seeing the availability of folks for just the school year. Normally, we pay twenty-five percent because that officer, when he's not a SRO during the school year, becomes a road deputy for us. However, if they don't end up becoming, if their, if their schedule ends up being identical to what the school is, then there would not be a, a contribution from the county in those cases. I'll also bring up that the school.
You've, you've talked with Yancy about that, to be no contribution requested from us?
No, because they're, they're, it reduces the overall cost by twenty-five percent.
Thinking what they were doing was taking the annual salary, like they do to teachers. And they put it, since they have the two months off, they don't really get twelve months. They really get the ten months that's divided over twelve months.
Right.
So I was thinking we would still pay twenty-five percent of the Resource Officer expense. It'd just be lower for the county and the school.
Well, that, I mean, that's a route that we can, that we can take as well. But normally, the only reason we pay for that twenty-five percent is because they're a road deputy for twenty-five percent of the time.
Okay, I didn't realize that was the reasoning. I thought it was just because we were trying to make sure they had the extra security and safety.
But when school is in, you don't have these Resource Officers, you'll have them at the schools. They won't be out there directing traffic. They will be in the school by the time the teachers get there. And they stay in the school until everybody else leaves, right?
No, sir. Currently, our SROs do the morning traffic and the afternoon traffic. That's a part of their duties.
So we're not doing what we wanted to do. We wanted a School Resource Officer in the school.
Right.
Goes in after the traffic, after, after the kids park there, they go on into school.
So once the school day, once the bell rings, they are inside the building, yes, sir. They're just helping, you know, with congestion and making sure no children get hit crossing the street. Because Ebenezer now has.
But they, but they're not in the, they're not in the school at that time.
No, sir. But they're helping the schools by providing that service.
I suspect should there be a situation, they would quickly drop their traffic duties.
To, to the call. Yes, sir.
But other than being out there directing the traffic and all this kind of stuff, they will be at the school every day.
Yes, sir. Yep. And they also stay for all sporting events, extracurricular, yep.
And Jimmy can use them for other things when we're, when they're not in school.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If, if we're paying the twenty-five percent, we can use them for, we can use them as road deputies when they're not at school. But I will say, the one other thing I wanted to bring up that the school district has been generous enough to offer, and I'm trying to remember how much it was.
A two hundred and fifty dollar stipend?
Yeah, so is during the school, during, when the school is in session, they are offering a two hundred and fifty dollar stipend in additional to, in addition to what we're paying for anyone, a, a month, for anyone that's, that's assigned as, as a School Resource Officer. So it's a, you know, just to, we've already obviously upped the pay on School Resource Officers in the new budget. And that just, you know, further offers another sweetener for folks to consider taking that position.
So those positions, the salary has been increased plus the stipend.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah, this, talking with Yancy, this is, Dr. Ford, this is really a special position. You're dealing with children and teachers. There's a, there's a different calling here, if I can use that word for these type of officers.
It's important, sadly.
So one thing I talked to Sheriff about, and he's doing now, they were just advertising for deputies, and then they would move into Resource Officers. We talked about, let's advertise for Resource Officers, because you may have a calling, that you may even come out of retirement if you can work with children in a school. You may have a passion for that, and you just don't want to be on the road as a deputy, you know.
Aside from that, are the, are the vehicles fully equipped like a deputy, or?
Yes.
Yeah, they're post-certified and, and they're carrying.
Yeah, they have a weapon and everything.
They are deputies. But we want to make them a Resource Officer, kind of like a department, so to speak.
So the Sheriff could, should it be a situation where we didn't have them the other two months, the Sheriff could put that other, that car, that vehicle in service?
That's right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm excited about that.
I think it's great.
The board members have talked to Yancy and myself about, we want to do all we can to not have an incident, so that.
Right.
And they're looking at other securities as, as well. So it's just one item they're trying to do to make F E M still one of the safest places to go to school. Good stuff. All right, is there any other discussion or a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, consideration to approve change order number two with Pond and Company related to the Stormwater Master Plan.
Good evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. Staff would like to add the creation of a project website using the social pinpoint to the Stormwater Master Plan project. This will allow citizens to review the project documents, report problems, and make comments. In addition to, in leading up to the public meeting that is currently scheduled, I believe for July. Staff recommends alternative one.
And this is the same software that we used for the transportation master plan. Except they will be able to pinpoint trouble areas in stormwater to do that.
So thirteen thousand is to add that to the, that link and then capture that data?
I said, that seems expensive. Just to add that little.
It does.
But we need it.
But it's good information. All right, any other question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number five, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh forty-three to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvement elements, CIE, annual update.
Teresa Concanon, Planning and Zoning Manager. This was approved for a transmittal to the Regional Commission about a month ago. DCA has approved it, and it is now up for you to adopt the resolution or to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal twenty-two capital improvements element and financial report.
Okay, any questions or discussions? If not, do you have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration to approve change order number one for agreement twenty-two dash twenty-five dash zero one zero with McLendon Enterprises Incorporated for the La Mig twenty twenty-two and other roadwork.
Yes, sir. Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. Again, we do currently have an agreement with McLendon for La Mig and the remaining T-SPOS projects that weren't covered by the F D R E. Staff did request a quote from McLendon to fix two other areas. One being Blue Jay and McCall Road intersection, and the other being on Old Augusta Road at the SD's trucking turn. Staff recommends alternative one.
And this estimate was based on the per unit that they use on the other items?
That's right.
So any other question or discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Keepers, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration to approve a quote from Stryker for the purchase of two stretchers for new ambulances for EMS.
Yes, sir. So this one is kind of connected with the next item as well. We did do an RFQ for two new ambulances for EMS. And just like last time, you may recall, we decided to separate the ambulance and the stretcher purchase. So that is what this is. This is for the two stretchers and the plates. It is a little more expensive than before. They have an.
I thought it was about forty thousand the last time, because I'm going to be shocked at the last time.
Were they climbing in the back of the ambulance?
Well, this is for two, eighty-three is for two.
This is, this is for two, but the, the mounting plate or the bracket that goes inside the ambulance is much better than what they had before. Ms. Wanda is actually very excited about this one, so it is a, I tried to write it down because I am not a paramedic. It's an automatic loading system, so that the paramedics won't have to lift the stretcher to get the, to get them in the, the ambulance. It's a hydraulic system, so it's a lot safer for medics. It won't cause any back issues. There's also a built-in charging system for the stretcher's batteries and things like that, so it'll make their lives a lot easier.
It's gonna make the EMS stretcher supplier easier too. Are we getting our EMS from a senior community or something? I can't pick up a person.
That's some big people out there.
I don't know. I guess they, this was bid out, right? I didn't look at the quotes on that.
The Stryker is who we go to every time for the, for the stretchers. That's what they have in all of their vehicles.
I did a little research on them last time.
And these are, I mean.
Yeah, I remember.
The, the EMS or the ambulance is set up to take these stretchers, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The stretcher itself.
Hydraulic system on them too, so they.
It all meshes up.
So there's no, is no, no lifting whatsoever. And when you slide it in, it locks into the plate and it's, it's secure.
There are some jurisdictions going to a, like a, a one-ton truck. Yeah.
Well, for forty-two thousand apiece, does it have four-wheel drive and how fast?
I believe it's made of solid gold as well. Let me just say, if I ever, God forbid, end up in the back of an ambulance, I'd be very happy that this was in there. They, anyways, yeah. The stretcher itself is the same that we've approved before. It's that, it's that bracket, that plate that's.
We went, we saw a demonstration last time, remember? That's how they showed it to us. Because we wanted to see what a forty thousand dollar bed looked like.
On behalf of our risk management tech, I will say that one fewer worker's compensation claim will pay for these two times over.
That's true. Workman's comp claim could be good.
Yes, sir.
A thousand dollars easily or more.
More than the difference that we're paying for this one.
All righty. Any other questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. That's probably something Mr. Laris is gonna look at on technology and see if we got the right technology on that. Item number eight, a new business, consideration to approve the purchase of two new ambulances for the EMS.
Yes, sir. So we, as I mentioned before, we did do an RFQ for these two new ambulances. We did get four submittals. This was actually our first official project through our new program, which we're very excited about, so thank you again. Custom Truck and Body Works did come in as the lowest bidder. Their original bid was four hundred fifty thousand thirty-eight dollars. But because we removed the stretchers and that bracket, they actually were able to reduce their cost to four hundred thirty thousand four hundred dollars. So staff recommends alternative one.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
Hundred thousand dollar difference in this. So that's a hundred thousand dollar difference when you deduct that, that's.
Yeah, custom, they've, they've won the last few times we've gone out to bids, and Ms. Wanda has a really good working relationship with, relationship with them as well.
Okay, any other question, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Deloach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Loper. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, a new business, consideration to approve appointment and reappointment to the Recreation Board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, you, this is a familiar subject to you all. There are three seats actually that have, whose terms have expired. That's the second, third, and fifth districts. Commissioner Burdette and Commissioner Deloach have opted to appoint Chris Sapp to the second district, Mr. Wil, Mike Wilson to the third district, and Commissioner Kiefer wishes to reappoint Mr. William Floyd to the fifth district. Staff recommends approval. These terms will run for the next four years, with their terms expiring on twenty twenty-six, January twenty twenty-six.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion to approve alternative one, which is the three that were just listed. That's by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. That concludes our business for the evening. We'll go to our reports from Commissioners and staff, and we'll start with our staff.
Just briefly, as a follow-up to the, the retreat, I hope to get a kind of a bullet point list of the action items from there to you all shortly. We've got a, we've been in a discussion to have a joint meeting with the City of Rincon, just to get an update and keep our coordination efforts going with them. As you know, we've, we've enjoyed several years of, of good relations and been able to get some, about five IGAs agreed to. and been able to get some, uh, um, about five IGAs, uh, agreed to with all the cities, so this is kind of an effort, uh, in, uh, to continue that. Also, uh, I've, uh, what meeting did we have? Um, we did have our, um, Transportation Advisory Board meeting.
Tim, before you get to that, did we have any recommended dates for getting together?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, that's what I, that's why I was announcing it. Uh, we're talking about Monday, October third, at six P M.
Is that, any commission right now know the, any problem with that? Um.
What's it, what is this for?
We're gonna have a dinner with the City of, um, Rincon and just go over some of the transportation things we're looking at.
Where will, where will they hold?
Right here.
Right here.
Training room.
And let them share with us things that they're looking forward and doing. Um, I think that we, the, their mayor has asked for that. Has some good communication between us and their council.
I'm good for Monday.
And I think it'd be good if we can get at least four of us there.
Yes, sir.
That'd be great.
I could commit to that.
Okay. And I'll plan to be there as soon as.
Six P M?
To six P M.
Six P M.
And we'll take responsibility for the dinner, right?
Uh, well, we're hosting it, so I was hoping maybe we can get them to, I'm just kidding.
I just want to make sure.
We'll, we'll take care of the dinner.
I don't want to, I don't want to show up and we say, well, we can consider that.
We'll have it over there in that room, or?
In this room right here. Should be plenty big for, um, the council and the commission, and whoever else wants to attend, but, okay?
Yep. Um, and I'll, I'll confirm it with them, uh, and then, uh, I, I just wanted to bring a brief point that was brought up at the Transportation Advisory Board meeting this morning. Um, uh, when GDOT brought up, um, you know, they have three projects going on, one of them being, uh, Hodgeville and Thirty, uh, Roundabout, and then the other, obviously, being Effingham Parkway. Um, I did express, uh, our concern about having Effingham Parkway completed before, um, the Hodgeville Roundabout, um, because of the effects that might have on, on neighborhoods like Forest Haven, so on and so forth, and Goshen. Um, and I've asked them if, you know, if there's anything we can do to move the Hodgeville Roundabout, um, project forward faster, um, that would be ideal. Um, uh, also, um, you'll notice, what'd you say?
Lots on that, Tim? That was actually one of my questions tonight on that.
Um, no, she, uh, she, uh, the, the woman at GDOT said that, um, she was going to, uh, look at the schedules, uh, and then get back to us, um, uh, on that, but that's the first time, uh, that they, uh, that we've really been able to address it with them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, also, as you notice, uh, Eric Larson, uh, his, uh, uh, last day was Friday. Uh, I've been taking over just all those, uh, capital projects with the conference calls, with, uh, uh, with all the project managers. Um, I'll try, we've got an, uh, prop- capital project manager here, she's not here tonight, but Angela Stanley, who's gonna be, uh, uh, kind of assist on the administrative part of that, uh, until we, uh, can get, uh, a full-time capital projects manager, uh, in place. Um, so, uh, we're, she's working on a format to draft a report to keep you updated on everything that we've got going on. Um, uh, particularly, I told her, in importance is the, uh, uh, is the future use land map, uh, code revamp, and the comprehensive plan. Uh, and, uh, Teresa, I, and Katie Donegan, um, uh, did have a meeting, uh, today on the future use land map based on the feedback that I got you all from the retreat, and we hope to have, uh, at least a draft for you, uh, next week, possibly sometime.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it would be good, cause we want to start picking those areas where we, between the public and our own thoughts, where the future commercial, residential, multifamily should be.
That's right.
And they're gonna make recommendations, right?
Yeah, and so, um, they, they made a recommendation to us. We saw a bunch of flaws in it, because, you know, they've mislabeled stuff, because they don't live here. They, uh, they don't know.
So, Steph has already done that portion of it.
Yeah, and so, we're, we're tweaking that, uh, and then also implementing some of the feedback that I got from you all, uh, at the, at the retreat. Uh, and then coming, they're gonna come up with a, um, another version of that, which I will then kind of submit for you all to just kind of review, get your feedback on. Uh, and then, you know, before we, uh, come up with a public document, you know, make sure, you know, everybody's concerned.
They'll be opportunity to add some more tweaks if we need to.
That's right. And then the public, and when it goes to the public, you know, we can, the whole point is to solicit, solicit feedback from them, uh, and implement any changes, um, uh, if need be, from that feedback.
Sounds good. Each of those three that you just listed, we should have something either October, November on all those, right?
Yes, and so, I mean, a, a deliverable, um, um, not, uh, you know, not, not a completion of the project. You know, the completion of the project goes into, uh, will go into early next year, um, based on the eighteen-month schedule.
We'll have something we can all begin to review and.
That's right. And I, and I told them, basically, we, we really need a future use land map that we can use for reference, even if we just pass that as a reference document as we await the, um, comp plan amendment process, which requires a bunch of, uh, public meetings.
Very good. Anything else?
Noted, zoning map would probably.
Oh, that, that too, as well. Uh, they, they will have both. They both, they were almost identical in the old comp plan, which what made that comp plan somewhat dysfunctional. Um, and so, we're gonna have a future use land map, which is based on uses, uh, and an updated zoning map, uh, which is based on current zoning, so.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Have they talked much about buffers, um, industrialized especially?
Well, we, we did ask them to, um, you know, look into the wording of what we've discussed, which is the, um, uh, which is the, kind of the berm-to-buffer, uh, uh, formula. Um, but also, the, making the buffer table, um, more consistent.
Yeah.
So that it's, and, and our thought is to make it, um, uh, cause uses can be subjective, but, um, but zoning isn't. It is or it isn't, so just base that table solely on what the current zoning is.
That'd be great.
Um, and then, uh, you know, then if there needs to be a, uh, a, a variance, because that zoning just doesn't necessarily comply with the use, then we can do that variance, but it's very confusing as it is right now.
I don't know if it had any other ideas beside the Birmingham, or, you know, what other municipalities do besides Birmingham. I think Birmingham's great, cause it really puts a great barrier up, and you already have dirt usually. But I didn't know if there's other alternatives to that, or?
Um, I mean, we do have, um, I mean, we can broaden, um, you know, what, what we can require in a buffer. Um, I mean, we, we have a list of plantings and, and, you know, what's, what's suitable. Uh, you know, one, one point is that if a buffer is required and there's no, and there's no plantings in there, you have to go in there, uh, and actually plant. Doesn't even matter if you disturbed it. Uh, and so, we could look at, um, you know, uh, expanding those definitions and, and requirements in there, um, but.
I just want to look for something that somebody else has used that has been successful, and, and people have been happy with it.
Right. Yeah, and they've done this all over this, all, all over the southeast, so we can probably, uh, if there's anything that they can think of, I'll ask them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim? All right.
I have, I have one. Um, I have a, uh, a neighborhood in my district, uh, it's actually Cobbleton off of Ebenezer Road.
Mhm.
Um, and they've been, uh, working as a, um, HOA on maintaining the, uh, their drainage ditches and detention ponds. And they were, they were wondering, does the county have somebody that can come out and kind of look and help assess it to see if they need? They're willing to do, is, is, you know, not looking for somebody to do anything. They would like just some direction to make sure it's working properly, or?
I did have a, a stormwater engineer, but he left on Friday.
I know, I had to, uh, bring that, yeah.
Uh, but, um, uh, I can find out, so we, we don't, we don't make.
And I, and I have told, you know, that we're sh- short in that department today, but.
But are we maintaining those assets right now, or they?
Um, no, they're, I, I believe they're.
Hundred percent them, okay. Um, I can, I think I know the, they're, they're the ones who did the bridge, right? Is that?
No, no, that's a, that's a different one.
That's a different one, okay. Um, give me their contact information, I can see what we can come up with.
And just, yeah, I mean.
That'll work.
That's it.
Yes, sir. Just two quick things. Um, you have with you your, um, August twenty-twenty-two report from EOM. You've also been emailed an invitation for Oglethorpe, um, Powers Open House on October the fourteenth. Check your schedules for, for that, and check your email for the invite.
Yeah, I might go to that.
I will be here for that.
Will be here for that. And if I can quickly recognize Ms. Dion Lovett in the rear and back of the room. She's the A A A Director with the Coastal Regional Commission.
Tell us about it. Uh, you've come a long ways, apparently. Would you like to share anything?
She is assistant to Mr. Burns. He's second in command with the CRC, Coastal CRC.
We want to give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like, since you've come a long ways.
Good evening. Didn't really plan to speak. Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. I'm just getting out, meeting everyone, um, seeing faces, making connections. I am the Assistant Executive Director at the Regional Commission, so I kind of operate as a deputy director to Alan Burns. So, um, Mr. Burns is still with us. I'm just out now learning and meeting people, and just, we're here to serve you, so contact us with, um, your needs. I know we've had communication with Teresa. We hadn't met, but I know you have worked with Aaron and others and Eric. Um, so, we're here to serve our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you tonight. Appreciate you attending this meeting. Anything else, my dear? We'll go around the room, see if there's anything we have commissioned.
Tim, any, uh, idea why Lakeside Pond's drying up yet? I don't know that we should even be involved in that, but they, they've continued to call me, thinking that somehow we have an answer.
Um, let me, um, I'm trying to figure out who I can put on it right now.
Right, I know with Eric being gone, I don't know.
Uh, I, I could have tried EOM, just to at least, uh, take a look. Um, I, I think, as I mentioned to you earlier, I think the hydrology is gonna tell us that there is a, there's a block in the Sticks Creek somewhere, um, and whether that's.
And again, I don't know that that's anything that we, it's, it's not ours, it's a private lake, but they, they have concerns, and somehow they feel that we should be aware.
Like I said, it's, it's an impoundment, so it's not a pond, so, um, the source of the impoundment is obviously blocked somewhere. We're, you know, and that's the Sticks Creek, or whatever it's called, and, and so, we've got to figure out what the problem is there.
I do not know. It's, uh, but it's, it's low, but I mean, I've seen the water tables drop on other, uh, ponds over there on Highway Eighty area that, and maybe it's just the water tables now. I have no idea. I don't have an answer for them. She said, the lady that keeps calling me that's president of HOA says, think that it's something that's.
I'll, uh, I'll at least, um, have, um, EOM take a look at it over there and see if they.
I mean, there may be something simple. I have no idea. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Good.
I'm good. I'm good.
All right, anything for your staff? All right. I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session. I promise you it'll be short.
It's never short.
Yeah, just to be sure, I'm gonna bring, bring some information to you, uh, for discussion of personnel property and pending litigation.
Make a motion to go into executive session and discuss personnel property and pending litigation.
First, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Loper, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously, and we'll go into executive session.
We're good. Aye.